Details, details. These are not the droids you're looking for. Okay, good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the meeting that I could use my agenda so that I could sound professional right off the top. This is Monroe City Council meeting, special workshop for Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. The time right now is 5:32 PM. I'm going to go ahead and ask that our clerk call the rule. Clerk Wykoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Fulcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher.
Thank you. Did we have a message from Councilmember Scarborough that he would not be here this week? Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll announce for the record when he comes in, but we understand he's in the parking lot for the record. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask that Councilmember Hanford, please lead us on the pledge. Thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Before I read the script on... And that's why I was going to ask, is there anybody here that wants to provide public comments this evening? All right, seeing none, I won't worry about trying to remember the script that I don't have before me this evening. Thank you. Next item on the agenda then is announcements and presentations. First item that I'm just going to share is, this is municipal. So we've got Professional Municipal Clerks Week coming up, and I'm not going to go through and read through the proclamation. It is in your packets. We all know that Clerk Wykoff and Clerk Simonson, or Deputy Clerk Simonson, as well as the other professional clerks we have here at the city, I almost said county, I'm sorry, at the city, do a lot to keep everything running. And so I just ask you all that when you have a moment, just please thank Clerk Simonson and Clerk Wykoff. We appreciate your professionalism. There's a certification process and everything, so I know that there's continuing education. You keep us on the right side of the law, and you also help keep our meetings moving. And I do appreciate everything that you do. Thank you. The other item is proclamation for recognizing May 2024 as Building Safety Month. I used to work in the building industry, used to work as a planner. I appreciate the work that our folks in our building department and also our planning department do to build community and make certain that we've got a safe place for all. So again, as you see our building and planning folks, please give them a hearty thank you as well. All right. Oh, I heard that over there, Lance. All right, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be Councilmember Reports. We're going to go ahead and start down at the end with Councilmember Hanford this evening. Councilmember Hanford, I'm going to go down the line so you can be ready with your microphones.
I'm ready, thank you. This week I attended the grand opening of the... I just happened to open my email on, was it Thursday morning, when Planet Fitness opened up? Thursday afternoon?
Thursday afternoon, yep.
And I just happened to open my city email right when they emailed us inviting us, and so I replied back, "Yeah, I'll be there." So I was there for the grand opening. They asked me to share a few words, so just welcome into the city. So that went great. And then there was Friday.
Arbor Day, Tree Planting Day.
Oh, Friday, yes. Oh yeah, Thursday night. Then that night, there was this Community Advisory Committee meeting, and that was, that went really well. And then Friday was Arbor Day, and it was great to plant the tree down there. And I think we had enough soil for another tree, so we'll have to remember that for next year. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. You know, taking a bite here, it's kind of like being in a restaurant, and somebody comes and asks you how your food is, just as you put the food in your mouth. So Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Hey there. Also went to the tree planting. Which was great. Arbor Day, that red oak, just about everybody was there. Great turnout with the kids and everything. Yeah, super cool. Got to meet Sprig for the first time, which was awesome. And then just did coffee with the reps. So Gainer and Steele, Representative Gainer and Steele went up there. That was just today, a couple hours ago. I went up with Councilmember Fulcher. Good talks. Talked about a lot of good stuff, and have some other things coming up this week. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Mayor, I was a food server for about five years, and I can tell you that that's a strategy that servers use is they don't want you to ask for anything, so they wait, see your mouth full, and then they ask. Everyone just gives a thumbs up.
Nice, I'll just grab their arm next time.
Exactly. Seriously. Same thing, attended Arbor Day, it was awesome. Want to give props to the mayor, he's always really good at firing up the little kids. Just amazing having them walk down there and create that memory. I did want to ask two things. If, Mayor, you would have staff look into crosswalk safety. There's a few different lights that stay green even when there are pedestrians in the crosswalk by the skate park on Frowlands Boulevard is the one that comes to mind, but also over by Autozone. So just want to ask if you could have staff follow up on looking into kind of what we can do to improve that?
Yeah, and so what I understand there is, like, the light turns green and people will turn right into a crosswalk without noticing that a pedestrian's getting ready to step into the crosswalk and things like that. And I know that there's some cities that have strategies where lights will delay when the crosswalk is actuated. So I'll have staff look into that and get back to you with some information about what sort of options we'd have on city streets and also on Highway 2, which is a DOT.
You're amazing.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You had another item? You said you had a couple items.
Oh, yes. The other thing was, just wanted to follow up on traffic camera question from way back when and see if we could do any sort of studies or data gathering on that with the kind of election coming up, or not the election, but the voting season. If there was good data to support an idea like that, it'd be interesting to consider an advisory vote for it, so.
Okay. What I would, if it pleases the council, we added to an upcoming agenda to talk about speed zone cameras and red light cameras. Is that what your interest is?
That would be awesome.
Okay, sounds great. So we'll go ahead and bring that forward in the next couple meetings. I know that since you mentioned the election season coming up, that there is a certain schedule that we need to follow if that is something that the council wanted to put to a vote of the people. And so staff will consider that, make certain we bring this forward to the council with enough time for some deliberation and a decision as to whether or not to put it on this coming general election. Yeah, that's what it is.
Amazing.
As I say, general fund.
And thank you to our clerks. You guys are world-class. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont, this time I didn't take a bite of food.
I didn't eat in anticipation. So I just wanted to start my comments by thanking Sheri and Jody. You guys are amazing, just wonderful, wonderful. We're so lucky to have you, thank you so much. I also attended the CAC meeting with Councilmember Hanford. Sorry, folks. And, so sorry. Oh, that's my city phone!
That's Sheri just calling to say you're welcome.
I am such a multitasker. So that was, those meetings are just great. We actually did a sort of a mapping exercise with MIG, and it was a lot of really good comment and feedback as we continue on that journey. And really appreciate Director Bailey and Kate and everybody in his group that's putting that together and shepherding us through that process. I'm really excited about some of the things that are coming out of that. Also attended the Arbor Day celebration and was able to bring my 86-year-old mother. And a lot of you know that my parents are 86 and 87 and recently moved in with me from Redding, California. And it's been really interesting getting their feedback as they navigate a new city and new services and talk about a great opportunity for me to garner feedback from new community members. But it was wonderful to introduce them to a lot of you here, and my mom really enjoyed it, and it was really great. Gosh, what else? On Saturday, or excuse me, Sunday is the Casey Edelbrock Run and Walk, and then the Battle of the Badges at noon at Lake Ty. So I hope to see all of you out there, I'm going to be running it, but dogs, walkers, all sorts of people are welcome. And we're going to be rooting for Monroe, of course, to Monroe Police to win. And gosh, let's see, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulcher?
Yeah, it's for police, that's who we're cheering for. Okay, I have a couple things. I was... So on Thursday night last week, Councilmember Fisher and I actually got an interesting opportunity to have dinner with a neighborhood group. I know you forgot that. And then spent about an hour talking about what it's like to be a council member and some of their concerns. It was just a really good feedback time. And then, it took an hour. Yes, it did. And Arbor Day was great, and I'm glad the clouds cleared just in time for us. And then also today, yes, I did get to see Gainer and Steele again along with Kyle and a couple of our school board members. And I'm just really impressed with how well they... There were some not-so-happy, you know, people with a lot of complaints. And I thought, huh, they deal so classily with that. So it was really nice to watch them and grateful for our representation in Olympia.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough?
Well, I guess my input's pretty self-aggrandizing, if you will, but I'm sorry. This weekend, I spent with, I went on an Honor Flight from San Diego to Washington DC. Fully paid trip for about 80 Vietnam-era SEALs. Excuse me. Got to San Diego Thursday night, had a big dinner at the hotel there with a lot of, seeing old friends and having a program. And then flew to Washington DC Friday morning. Got there, had another event Friday night. Saturday morning, we all got on buses, toured a bunch of the monuments. Changing of the Guard, the Marine Corps Monument, FDR Monument, World War II Monument, and the wall. Then we got on a plane Sunday morning, came home and had about a thousand people at the San Diego Airport to welcome us home, which was... And the credit goes to the people of the Honor Flight Committee Group. It's all paid for, it's all free to us. Each two people had a guardian to herd us around, so we didn't get lost. Make sure we had whatever we needed, get us to the bus on time. They're the people that ought to get the credit. And one gentleman, San Diego area, who donated $150,000... $150,000 towards it, and that was only about the half of the cost.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. Councilmember Gamble?
Well, it is May tomorrow, and I have a senior, so... Everything is, yeah, all things around that. And, but what a cool time of year for school. It's scholarship season, so I've been reading, geez, just scholarship, application after scholarship application through the Royal Public School Foundation. If you want to be, get your faith restored in the youth, serve on a board where you get to read scholarship applications, there's a lot of fine young men and women coming out of this Sky Valley here. So it has been just, you know, 12 years I've been at it, and they just, the applications just get better and better every year. I'm just thoroughly impressed with the amount of community service. And this is right here. But that doesn't just happen, there's a lot that goes into that, you know, parents and community that has, that influences those young adults. And it's just been a lot of fun reading through. I still got some more to read tonight. And then we will get to, the ceremony is here coming up pretty quick, which just blows my mind. And last week, the MHS Boys Baseball Team, West Coast North Champs, I think it's the first time in like 15, 16 years, something like that. So there will be a home playoff game, it's this week. I'm forgetting what day it is off the top of my head. But some playoff baseball for our own Monroe Bearcats. Yes, and yes, the Battle Back Run this weekend, Battle of the Badges. And there's just a lot of stuff coming up, including prom and all that kind of jazz. That's it.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda then is the Mayor and Administrator Reports. And so we'll do City Administrator Extended Agenda first.
Thank you, Jody. I know those that are listening online want to be sure and hear about the Extended Agenda.
Yep, thank you, Jacob. Thank you, Tyler.
We are canceling next week's meeting, both the Public Safety Committee meeting and the regular study session meeting, because we will not have a quorum. We have a couple of council members that are going to be absent that evening, and then another couple that are going to be back in Washington DC for the Economic Alliance flying. For the following meeting then, on May 14th, we will have a City Council Legislative Affairs Committee, and we will be talking about the council rules and procedure and some amendment options that will be presented by Clerk Wykoff. And then for the regular business meeting, we will have a presentation from Sean Woodward. He's going to be presenting the School District Five-Year Strategic Plan. I know that the school's been working on that for at least the last year and a half since Sean joined the community. And then on the consent agenda, we have the regular accounts payable accounts and the ACH, and then the meeting minutes. Under new business, we'll have a resolution to renew the Community Human Services Advisory Board, and a resolution for an email retention policy from, again, Clerk Wykoff. A couple of discussion items, we'll have the RFP for solid waste presented by Megandaro, and then Department reports of the Extended Agenda.
Thank you. Any questions on the Extended Agenda? All right, and then we'll add those two items we discussed, or the one item that we discussed to the agenda. All right. And then next item then is the City Administrator Report.
Great, just a couple of items. Just a continued reminder about the May 16th Port to Boundary Expansion between 4:40 and 6:30 at the Monroe Senior Center. And then on May 18th, just a reminder that we are hosting the 2024 Plagues for Our Fall On Event, a 5K run that starts at 7:30 AM at Lake Ty for those of you that are, would like to participate in either run or walk. And then a recognition for our building department. The mayor took a drive up to Leavenworth last week and was with Stacy Criswell, our building official, as they were presented with a award from the Washington Association of Building Officials for jurisdictional outrage. So Stacy led the effort to bring together jurisdictions from across both King and Snohomish Counties. They created several templates that were used then to alert the community around changes coming from the Wildland Urban Interface Code and some other code updates that were happening as well. So the city received that recognition, and we want to just recognize then Stacy particularly and members of our building department who participated in that effort.
All right, thank you. For me, I had a great time at the Arbor Day event. It was great seeing five councilmembers there. Thank you all for being there. Sprig enjoyed meeting each and every one of you, as well as each and every one of the kids and every bird that flew by, so. Met with the superintendent on Friday afternoon just after that meeting. Had a nice conversation with him just about some things related to school facility planning and things like that. So if you're interested in that, I can certainly talk with you a little bit more offline. And have been interviewing people for Parks Board openings. As you heard, we've, oh, I also interviewed people for CHAB. I have three people to bring forward for council's consideration if you decide to continue with CHAB with that resolution at the next meeting. Very well-qualified people, and the three people live in city limits, if I remember correctly. And I think that's it for a report out for now. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on then to the next item on the agenda. This is discussion items to 2025 strategic priorities and 2025-2029 strategic plan review. And I'm going to go ahead and hand over to Debra, Administrator Knight.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I first want to just start off by recognizing, because I hadn't really given it a lot of thought until we start, sat down and started working on this strategic plan. Together, Mayor and Council, we've been doing a strategic plan since 2018. So the strategic planning effort goes back a ways, and it's not every community, not every council, not every staff that's able to actually kind of sit down and work together and develop a strategic plan. But I do think that it's been really instrumental in helping us achieve some of our long-range goals. I think our first strategic plan was really built around trying to pay off the North Kelsey debt, for example, and that was something that council had identified early on. And then, moving on and funding the phase of the municipal campus improvements that we're in now. So it's really helpful in kind of identifying the big-picture things that the council and the community and mayor, that we all want to see achieved, and really kind of focusing our limited resources on achieving those goals. And the same thing goes with staff. We sat down mayor and senior leadership team and early on, several months ago, and started to think about what is it that we're currently working on and what are the things that we've heard from community members and from council. One of those items came up earlier, the speed zone cameras, for example, that I think the community is interested in seeing. And what we try to do then is to put together a plan and bring that forward to you as we're doing right now, in order for you to weigh in and, you know, provide some direction and some instruction, some support around the things that are most important to you. So as Mayor Thomas is putting together his recommended budget, he can consider those things from your perspective and from the community's perspective. So that's what we're really here tonight to do. Can you take the, I think the requested action slide is, I think, the one that, yep, there you go. So we did things just slightly different this year. I had assistance from Zach Humphries. And together, Zach and I put together the strategic plan and the strategic priorities list. A lot of that work was actually done by Zach, and so I want to kind of recognize the work that he did. He presented to the senior leadership team a couple of times, received input. And so a lot of the work that you're seeing tonight, although I think, you know, was, direction was provided by the entire team, the actual work that was done was done by Zach. So we're going to tag-team the presentation tonight together. And Zach has a fan in the audience today as well, and so we want to make sure that he has plenty of opportunity to wow his fan base. It is important, it is important.
So if he stands up and does this, we need to go along and do the wave all the way around?
Oh, is the fan base? Thank you so much. So just as a reminder to councilmembers and for those that are new to this process, when we were doing an annual budget, we would come by and we would do the update to the strategic plan and strategic priorities list annually. But now that we're doing a two-year budget, we then come back to council and community and talk about what are the strategic priorities that we want to be and the strategic projects that will implement those priorities. So what we're hoping from council tonight is to, we're just going to briefly review the steps to develop and adopt the strategic priorities and the plan, and then review those priorities and the plan together. So this would be an opportunity then to provide input on any of those projects. Again, the idea is to provide that input early, so Mayor, as he's developing his recommended budget along with staff members, we can take those priorities into consideration. So next slide, please. Nope, no worries. So where are we at exactly in the, in the plan, in the planning process? So we are at the, where are we now? So what are the things that we've been working on and the things that we've already accomplished? And I did provide a list in the Agenda Bill of those items, so you can see the progress that we've been making. I think so often times when we're working in local government, it just seems like things happen very, very slowly. And the analogy I like to use is, it's like being on a glacier. When you're on it, you have no idea that you're moving kind of inch by inch forward, but when you turn around and look behind you, you can clearly see the landscape has changed. And I think that's true in the Monroe community. So what we're going to be talking about tonight is really where do we want to be and how will we get there? And then I just wanted to remind council too that we're just talking right now about the priorities and the projects, but there is a strong link to our financial resources. And we'll be coming back to council on May 21st with a revenue discussion. So some of the discussion may begin tonight, but then the deeper dive around what revenue options do we have to achieve the strategic priorities and accomplish those strategic plans, we'll continue to have that conversation as we develop the budget. We do get the five-year forecast, so what we do is we take into consideration what are the budget implications for the mayor's recommended budget for the first two years? So we're looking at '25 and '26, '25 and '26. But we do have a five-year forecast that then looks forward. And I always like the analogy that our finance director, Becky Hassert, uses, which is, you can see out into the future as we look at that five-year forecast that eventually the revenues that we currently have in place are insufficient to kind of meet, you know, our future needs. It's like needing to put gas in your car. When you leave to go on a journey, you have gas in the tank and you know it'll get you so far, but eventually you've got to refill that tank. And the city finances and the five-year forecast indicate where that tank is going to need to be refilled. So that's a really important part of the budget discussion. And then, of course, we'll bring forward the biennial budget to council with an adoption in December of 2024. And then departments put together their work plans, and boards and commissions put together their work plans then, and all of that is based around the budget, the two-year budget. So that's the kind of big-picture connection between what we're doing tonight and what you'll be seeing coming forward in the upcoming months. We then do, because we have a biennial budget, we then do an annual review of the budget, just a budget check-in and any adjustments that need to be done. And that's, of course, scheduled for mid-2025. So that's the opportunity then to come back and take a look, because everything that we're planning here today, a year in advance, doesn't always necessarily come to fruition in the way that we plan it. So that allows then for a budget adjustment to take place. So any questions about kind of the general process that we're, we're kind of starting that journey, starting to walk down that pathway right now?
Any questions, council? All right, go ahead and move on.
All right. So the next couple of slides that we're going to be reviewing with council really go over then the process that we went through to develop the, what we're calling the strategic priorities. And I'm going to go ahead and let Zach talk about the process that we went through and how the strategic priorities have changed from the last biennial budget to this one.
Yeah, so I think this first slide is really just a good overview, I think, just the idea or general principle of strategic planning. Going back to those first three questions that Debra kind of entertained to the council this evening, it's really that first question of asking ourselves, where are we now? And that's looking at a couple of different things. It's looking at the old strategic plan and old strategic list of priorities and identifying which of those items have been completed or finished, or which of those policy goals and priorities have been achieved, and then amending sort of your next plan. I think it's always fun to be in this stage, because you get to see what you have done as a community. And Debra and Administrator Knight touched on the municipal campus redevelopment and the financing efforts that were undertaken by the city council. Was looking just back at the old plan, of course, all the work we've been doing on the comprehensive plan, working with our consultant to develop a robust... working with our consultant to develop a robust document to submit to the state. The festival lot property acquisition, something that's been on the the list of goals and priorities for this city for, I think, a number of decades now. And we've finally been able to check that off the box, and now we have land to work with. I think something really notable, too, I noticed on the 23 through 2027 strategic plan was our human services development. And we brought a human services coordinator on board to our team, Rachel Adams, of course, who's developed a very robust system, networked with our community partners to achieve and meet the goals and needs of our community. So it's asking that question, looking back at things that were on the list, and then moving forward, keeping our ear to the ground, understanding what the needs of not only this legislative body, but also the needs of our community to really inform sort of how we develop the the next plan. Then asking, of course, kind of along those lines, where do we want to be? And I think something that was really instrumental in developing this plan, as well as the last one, was Imagine Monroe, the mission vision statement that our community developed with with the city council, using that as sort of a north star for our aspirations and our dreams, as well as our needs. And then really using, I think, the the professionalism at the staff level to sort of interpret what that vision and mission statement means and how we how we implement that in the projects that that we perform and provide to our community. So it's reviewing our vision, it's also reviewing existing current programs, understanding what the capacity needs are. You know, when when we make investments and contribute new services to our community, we have to build incapacity, build more capacity to service those and keep those afloat. And then, of course, identifying how the how we're actually going to to make those a reality, identifying revenue, how we're actually going to pay for for some of those things. So this this is a broad, I think, just general overview of the of the strategic planning process. And of course, as Administrator Knight alluded to, this is a lot of work with department heads and staff members to inform not only what our priorities are, but also how we're going to line up our projects. And I just want to touch on, I think, those four bullet points on the side there is, I think it's, they're important to just keep in mind that this is a list that we develop of of things that could actually be achieved in the future, that we can, something, things that we can actually measure and tell the community, this is, you know, where your tax dollars are going towards and then how you're getting a return on your investment. And there's that time sensitive piece of there's this sense that projects are scheduled out over a period of time. And that also informs the way we we budget, or that the council budgets. Think that it's always good to mention that that a plan is planned, but that also means building incapacity to meet sort of exigent circumstances and needs. Of course, we can't necessarily foresee what the the needs of our community will be five years from now. But having a plan nonetheless builds in that capacity and at least shows why our priorities were to begin with and how we might be able to add things on in the future. I think it's also important to keep this short and simple. One thing I was addressing with the senior leadership team was that this is really a nice package to sort of hand to our residents and explain how their tax dollars are being used. And I think that short and simple piece is really key to this, really getting at the gist of of what our projects are as we move forward and making it very clear how how we justify projects and needs of our community. And we'll kind of go into how this 2025-2029 plan does that. And then another thing, at the bottom there, you say a unit, not a menu. I think really what that's touching on is that this is, this is something that's a living and breathing document, but it's also something that's that's reasonable and understandable, that's forward thinking. A wish list, but not necessarily in the the fantastic sense of it. Of course, you know, I would love a a public yacht to be provided on Lake Tye, but, you know, well, we're not there yet. A pipe dream of mine, maybe, you know, 15 years from now.
I heard a motion from Zach. Anybody want a second?
So anyways, we'll get into the weeds now, next slide. So as I mentioned, Imagine Monroe has been the vision statement that was used to inform this process and and build on not only the language, but also the projects we identify in this plan. And that's kind of hip and hip with the the 20-year comprehensive plan. Is that's that's a document that's that's in a way governs quite a bit of what we do at the local level. So using those two to inform our, how we how we will invest and make investments into projects was was very key. And you'll notice goals and projects indicated there at the bottom. I'll explain what those mean. This is really kind of one and the same thing. And I think that's one thing I want to reiterate to the city council is you will see sort of two different formatted documents, but this is really one package that we're presenting to you. And and I'll explain the the flow chart here in a little bit. So we have Imagine Monroe, then we have sort of the the policy areas that we've identified through Imagine Monroe, each of sort of the clauses of of that vision statement. We have accessible parks and healthy waterways as being a priority. That's something that's identified and articulated in Imagine Monroe. Support local businesses and products, building regional connections, being friendly and responsive, strengthening those local connections, and of course, ensuring that that our community is a safe place. And then that informs our goals. And some of the examples I just want to provide here, this is not an extensive list. List is is much larger than this. But we identified sort of what I'm calling priority policy goals. And this is really the big difference between the 2025-2029 strategic priorities list and plan and the 2023-2027 plan. The 2023-2027 strategic priorities list and plan identified in its priorities some specific projects as well as some broad general policy language. And what was, it was kind of interesting to consider was that some of those specific projects were also articulated in the strategic plan, so the schedule of how projects would be phased out. But some of those projects that were in the phased scheduled plan were were not reflected in the priorities list. And I think especially as as a resident, if we're trying to communicate this to someone, you have to ask yourself, why, why is this a priority and in the plan? But why is this, why are some projects in the plan but not priorities? And really what the senior leadership team, Deborah and myself, sort of ascertain is what we're getting at is is a policy goal, a a broad implementable statement that takes Imagine Monroe and breaks it down into how Imagine Monroe actually can be implemented. So those, that's what the the goals, those examples, it's what's trying to articulate is we take each of the clauses of Imagine Monroe and then turn that into actionable language. That actionable language informs the projects that we commit to and invest in in the actual strategic plan. So the flow, Imagine Monroe, the priority policy goals, which is the strategic priorities list we'll review here in, I think, in the next slide, and then the actual projects that will be phased out throughout the five years that staff is identifying and recommending to council. So next slide. And so then just some of the policy considerations for city council is, do do these priority goals identified in the 2025-2029 plan achieve the community's long-range vision? And in all of your opinions, that's a discussion that will need to be had. Another question we want the council to entertain is, do these projects identified, so the projects that flow from those goals and in this new draft plan, implement the strategic goals? Or are they relevant? Are these projects relevant? Can they be justified by not only the policy goals, but ultimately Imagine Monroe? And then does this five-year strategic plan identify adequate funding, staff resources for priority projects? This is one of the things that we'll need to consider and build into the plan potentially is how are we going to identify or or create new revenue to pay for services or projects? And and does the the current plan make that clear? Is it clear how we are actually going to pay for the implementation of these projects? And then is the proposed schedule to complete priority projects realistic? You know, given our limited resources? And and does it fall in line with with the community? As well as the community and the vision statement that we have to to guide us? And then the last bullet point on this slide is our voter-approved measures and considerations of new revenue sources scheduled to allow adequate community outreach and input. And that's something that Administrator Knight and potentially some other senior leadership team members will go into further as we start to have that revenue discussion or prep for that revenue discussion later in May. Next slide. And so it's small. But this is, this is the strategic, these are the strategic priorities that that the senior leadership team and staff have identified. I think this does a really good job of sort of showing the flow of starting out with Imagine Monroe as sort of that preamble to all of this, all of this process. And then from Imagine Monroe, in each of those columns that you see, that's the actionable, implementable policy language that the staff has created of how how projects will flow from Imagine Monroe are through these policy priority goals. It's not intentional that there only be four or five in each column. Of course, I think of council as I, as you have to read these. If you identify other policy priority goals that that could or should flow from Imagine Monroe, that's something that staff is looking for. Because these are the, these priorities in in those blue boxes, those will be the the goals that we use to justify the projects that end up on the 2025 through 2029 strategic plan. So I'm I'm not sure if if we have scheduled time built into this after the presentation or now to it to answer any questions, but that's the extent of of my presentation, Mayor. So.
Thank you. So a couple of things to remember. One, we look at this every year. Two, we look at this in greater detail every two years as part of the budgetary process. And yeah, Steph and I began working on this back in January. So we, you know, we spend considerable amount of time doing this. As you're looking at this, if you see anything you'd like added to it or anything revised, this would be a good time to do that. This will, again, we're going to be working on sort of funding based on the conversation that we have here. And you will have an opportunity to see this again and to discuss this again. It's not like a decision's going to be rendered this evening. But it allows me to provide guidance and allows me to make those nuanced choices that I'll need to make throughout the summer, not later than September, so that you have a budget before you that hopefully reflects what your priorities are that you're going to be establishing over the next month or so. Make sense? Any questions at this time or items for clarification or anything you'd like to see revised in what you're looking at right here? Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
So one of the things I noted when I was looking through this is we're talking about attracting business or or people downtown, businesses downtown, is we listed our magazines, our Choose Monroe magazine and our Regional Tourism magazine. I did see some social media in there as well. But I just wanted to make a note that I think it's going to take a lot more than just magazines to bring people in, and I'd like to see an expansion of some of that in this plan to include a variety of ways of outreach and bringing people in. I just don't think, I mean, the magazines are great and they're still a viable tool, and they should be in racks and they should be out in the community. But that's certainly not the only way to reach out to people and bring them in. And there's a lot of tools in the kit that we can use. And so I'd like to see an expansion of that if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And one of the things, and you know, I'll clarify if I'm looking at this wrong, but we're, we're also going to be going into more detail on the next subsequent slides, right?
Yes, so loud and clear, Councilmember Beaumont. But yeah, this is just the list of priorities.
So that, and and I'm just letting folks know that, that we're going to take a note of that and we'll discuss it again when we get to it on the slides. But just in case other people wanted to put their flags up, we're going to get into higher detail in the next slides also. Is there anything else at this level? Councilmember Walker, I saw your flag go up. Okay. Anything on this then, at this high level, that you have questions, concerns or revisions on? All right, let's go ahead and move into the next slide. Thank you. You're going to stay this? Okay, we'll go back to that slide. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Because I remember making the change on, for the support local businesses and products, our historic downtown and business districts are thriving and full of locally owned businesses and locally sourced products. So we were very specific when we made this tweak, for those who are trying to remember, that we included the business districts, not just downtown. They're all important, but I'm just, I just was reading the the items underneath, and we don't call, we just mention downtown, we don't mention the business districts, so.
Yes, and to the to the mayor's point, when we get into the project list, we'll have some specific projects that do address different parts of our business community. But keep that in mind. And so when you look at what is identified here as being the strategic priorities, it does say foster a vibrant local economy that promotes locally owned businesses and locally sourced products. Support business recruitment, retention and expansion initiatives, so not specific to downtown. It does say promote downtown to attract residents and visitors. And then the last one, of course, is invest in initiatives that draw people to the city's businesses. So all businesses, there's just one bullet point in there specific to the downtown. And the specific projects will be coming, I think, two slides from from now. So we have a slide for each one of these categories. And within that, then, there are the specific projects. And that would be the time, if you're looking at, then, the slide for support locally owned businesses. If you're not seeing enough in there, we can talk more about where where you might want to do some initial additional investments for.
Yeah, I guess for me, I know we had this discussion before. I'm just trying to remember because we were having some that we're getting caught up with. Well, what about North Cal? They would name the districts, right? And when you don't call it out, and the only one you call out is the downtown, I mean, obviously, it's important, we put a ton of, you know, investment there. But I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the other. You know, if it's not called out and the priority isn't some, I don't, and I'm, I'm not saying I know how to, you know, do it, but I just, I'm cognizant of that because we got that feedback before.
As we were discussing this, this is one of the the things that we discussed and what the appropriate level was. I think at this level, we wanted to call out the downtown specifically, but then leave room at this high level for all of the business areas, recognizing that it does talk about business districts. I know that we had a conversation, I forget where it ended up in this, but we were talking about like promoting North Kelsey. We were also talking about promoting the industrial area. So we did have those conversations in terms of districts. We'll just make certain that those have flowed down and if they have, to point out where they are in the in the next slides. Does that sound good? Is there something you wanted more specific at this level?
No, I'm just, it's the only one that's called out, right?
Correct, yes.
So that, what was that? I'm I'm open, as I, I think you were around for the.
Yeah, but it is, it is the only place that has its own plan, master plan at one point, and.
North Kelsey did, yeah.
Did it? Okay, so I'm I'm specifically remembering downtown master plan. And also, maybe I'm partial, admittedly, so. But there is something special when it comes to the downtown. Yeah, we do want to recognize it, but no, we do not want to leave out, leave out the other ones. I don't think we are, I think we're going to see that in two slides.
Well, and to be, I mean, I'm glad you brought that up because the feedback that we got was specific to North Kelsey because we did have a master plan and because we straightened. We actually had businesses that moved out of the downtown and moved to North Kelsey because of the plan. And so there's, there was a little bit of feedback that, hey, are we going to execute on that? And so did not see it in the priorities, but I'm just bringing it up because that was what we got back from.
Yeah, and I think it's good to bring it up here. Let's, let's do this, let's, let's go down to the next level of slides and see how that's in there and then see if there's an interest in in bringing it back up here. One of the things that I would acknowledge that makes the downtown different, just to, just to add to that is when we're talking about locally sourced products and locally owned businesses, these days you're usually going to have that like in our downtown, where you don't have that anchor drop like Lowe's or Fred Meyer or something along those lines. So I think that's one of the things that that makes the downtown feel a little bit different than than other areas. Doesn't mean that you can't identify those here, but that's one of the things that crosses my mind. I'm going to recommend that we go ahead and go on to the next couple of slides, see how that plays out, and then maybe that'll inform what we change here. Does that make sense? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just think we need to be careful when we make those things because we have a lot of locally owned businesses, lit fields, that, you know, are keep like that are in the North Kelsey. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand, and just so that, just to clarify, we're, to me, those are areas where there are anchors. We don't have an anchor in the downtown. That's part of what I'm thinking about that's a little bit different with the downtown. So, you know, let's, let's, let's keep talking because there's nothing wrong with adding something here at all. I'm just, to me, I do see a little bit of difference, and I think that's, that's the only reason why I'm still sharing. All right, anything else on on this level? All right, let's go ahead and go to the next slide.
All right. This is truly the interactive part of this discussion with council this evening because this is where the, this is where the projects lists begin. And so what we've done is on the left-hand side is the priority policy goals that you saw in the previous. that you saw on the previous slide. And we're going to go through each one of these. So access to park and healthy waterways. So just to pull out a few of the projects and bring them to council's attention. And remember, you know, part of the strategic plan process is to identify those projects that take multiple years to complete. Because those projects specifically, we have to plan ahead for. We have to ensure that we have adequate resources, both financial and staffing, to accomplish some of these projects that take an extended amount of time to complete. And I'm thinking, for example, of the Lake Ty synthetic turf fields. I mean, that was on the city's strategic plan for five, seven years before we finally accomplished that goal, before we had enough financial resources in order to be able to make that happen. Now, the struggle that we have is that we have been very successful in adding new resources to our park system, but we haven't kept pace with having enough staffing resources to continue to maintain those parks at the current levels of service. And so we're going to be talking about that in a subsequent slide. What do we, how do we go about ensuring that we maintain that, those operations and maintenance efforts? So there are a lot of parks projects that are on this list. A couple that I want to bring to your attention that may be new, that council members that have been in office for several years may not have previously seen. So the rotary field turf needs to be replaced. And that's going to be a very expensive project, so I think upwards of a million dollars. Is that correct, Mike, in an early estimate or? Thank you. And then continuing to replace our play facilities. We've been on a regular kind of annual replacement of aging play structures around the city. And so this plan continues that process of annual replacements. Retiring the debt for the festival lot. We did internal borrowing for that. I mean, we need to pay off that debt in order to move to the next phase of design and potential construction. And then one from our wastewater treatment plant, and that's continued investment in the upgrades of the wastewater treatment plant. This one mentions the biosolids construction, which again is an expensive project that we have actually been setting aside, funding for through the sewer utilities. So those are just a couple of projects that I wanted to bring to council's attention. But this would be then the opportunity for council to take a look at those priority policy goals and the project lists and ask any questions or make any suggestions.
All right. So questions from the council. And again, the areas that are more critical for me would be 25 and 26, just for the budget, just like with 522 and other multi-year projects. You sometimes have things where things are approved in the future. And the hope is that at some point in time, we get there into that point in the future and those items get done. But they tend to have a little bit less of a degree of criticality as 25 and 26 for the two-year budget. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you, can you describe what exactly enhanced the tree canopy at Lake Ty looks like?
Certainly. So right now, we have trees that are along the street side of Briarlands Boulevard. And then on the east side of the lake, there's less tree cover. And so there has been an interest in ensuring that there is kind of tree cover around the entire lake. And so part of the way that we've been implementing that kind of on a slow pace is through the annual tree planting for Arbor Day. But that's very slow. And while we understand that we need to have some diversity of trees, I think that's the long-term intent. We do have some challenges, as Mike has described those to me. We do have on the lakeside, you know, the issue, I think, what is it with the erosion at that point? And then we also have a challenge because there are power lines. But nonetheless, I think that's the long-term intent. Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to add, to answer your question, that this also came from, many of you may recall, we did a master plan for Lake Ty. And that's one of the items that when you're looking at the various phases of the development, redevelopment of that park was enhancing the tree canopy, you know, throughout the park there, but namely along the lake, you know? So that's something that as far as just getting a start on that and as far as a smaller piece of the phase. So then just, I guess, to end, what I just brought up about phases in the later years, 28, 29, that we, like we talked about, like we're going to have to just, you know, we're scoping out what the phase two would be. Likely it'll include increase of parking or expansion of parking and also improvements to the beach area and dock area and whatnot, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or suggested revisions or items to discuss? Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. I had a question about IEM community-specific training, Emmitsburg.
Oh, sure. So that is related to emergency management training. So it is just continuing the work that we're currently doing to ensure that both staff and the community is prepared for a potential disaster.
Okay, great. And one other question was the providing stipends to all board and commission volunteers. Are we suggesting that we would add stipends for?
Councilmember, which slide are you on?
This is priority policy goals, so page, am I on the wrong slide?
Yeah, we're on access to parks and healthy waterways. I think you jumped ahead.
I think I jumped ahead. So sorry. Okay, I'll ask you later.
Land on parks and healthy waterways. I know I saw it, but I wasn't sure where.
Tammy?
I was gonna say, we could do that too, if you want.
Are you drinking coffee tonight?
You threw us off for a loop there for a minute, but we're with you now.
I was, I was going to ask where the IEM was. It's all good. Okay, cool. Anything else on this slide?
Can I add something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to mention to all council members that if any of you would like to, you know, off after the meeting or, you know, at a future time, if you want to just one-on-one with me or have any, you know, thinking in more questions, I'd be happy to give you any background on any of these items.
Any other questions? Councilmember Gamble?
Electrifying city fleet and equipment. How deep are we going on that? I guess is.
I believe that.
Because there's a lot of, I've gone down the rabbit hole on this one.
Yeah, that's, that's three years out and the, oh no, wait a minute, nevermind. So the whole point on the electrifying fleet and charging infrastructure, it's, when we're talking about like equipment and things like that, we want to make certain that it's stuff that's going to actually work. So I know in the last legislative session that there was an interest in doing like electric leaf blowers and stuff like that, and some of that technology doesn't, doesn't yet work. So, you know, just to be clear, we would, if council is interested in this, we would do this to the extent that it still obviously meets our needs and things like that. But I did interrupt other staff members that were responding to that.
Oh, I was just going to add that Public Works Director Jacob Roberts is on the line. And so he's probably the best person to answer this question.
I'm basically saying, I mean, this is something we want to talk about later. That's fine. That's just something that I would definitely like because it's in, shown in the budget for 25, 26. And there is, to your point.
Yeah, I was just double checking.
There's a lot of stuff that is pointing to like, is this the best thing?
Right, I think in this case, what we're doing is already transitioning some of our fleet, for example, to hybrid. So that's just the direction that we're moving at this point. We're not pushing all in on electric.
Okay. And that was my concern when you asked the question. I want to be clear that we're not pushing all in on straight electric.
He's finally raising his hand.
Oh, I need to, I need to pull up the participants. Jake, oh, okay, cool. I need to put my participants back up. I had to, I had to put them away.
Yeah, Jacob, I don't want to end up in a situation where you're having to correct me later on.
Yeah, Jacob?
What you meant to say was?
Jacob, Jacob, they're here.
Gosh, I'm working on it. Can y'all see me and hear me?
And for some reason, I've lost my participants. Go ahead.
Am I too close? I don't know. The hotel wifi is not so good, so I'm using my phone, so I, I can't see anything. So anyway.
Hey, Jacob, we're just going to keep you in the panelist list because we don't have any attendees.
Okay.
So you're stuck with us now.
Thank you. In any case, Councilmember Hanford, I think that electrify.
That would be Councilmember Gamble.
Sorry, Gamble, my apologies. Councilmember Gamble, I think electrify is probably too small of a terminology. So what we are planning to do is to evaluate our entire fleet as a whole, look at what alternative options there are other than the traditional, you know, internal combustion engines that are out there. Some of it might be electric, some of it might be hydrogen, some of it might be what other options are available to us. And then appropriately implement that over a period of, oh, probably a decade as fleet and equipment vehicles come up for replacement on a regular schedule. Something that we are very aware of is that a lot of our larger pieces in our fleet, our class six and up trucks, probably aren't a good fit for electricity at this point in time. And so that's not something we'd be looking at.
Any other questions? Councilmember Scarborough? Okay. So looking, looking at the words again, for 2025, it would be design. And part of that would be to what Jacob said, just what's a good fit with technology today? What's not? The construct, of course, is going to be dependent upon the design and purpose and needs in 25 and what's available. But yeah, any other questions? Councilmember Walker, go ahead. Yeah, just.
Listen to you, cuss me, wow.
Just remember to use your, use your flags because if, just in case I did miss Kyle, I didn't mean to, I happened to see his.
He was backing forth.
Jake does this.
I see your eyes catch it and then I'm like, all right, I'm good.
That's fine, yeah.
I need the Kyle stick, yeah. In 2025, play facilities replacement levy dependent, being that I think the parks levy that it might be referring to didn't pass. Is that just, it didn't get edited out?
No, we're actually proposing in a later slide to talk with council about a levy lid lift specifically to support parks' operations maintenance and some capital.
Yeah, all right, I'll stay high level. But I appreciate Councilmember Gamble's question about the electrification of the fleet.
All right, anything else? Okay, so everybody took note of the levy lid lift because that's, that's something, right?
And that's coming back tonight.
We'll be talking about that with a couple of other items here, but, but yeah. Perfect. Good.
All right, next one. I think we're ready to move on. Next slide. Thank you. Supporting local businesses and products. So this gets back, I think, to Councilmember Gamble's earlier comment about whether or not the proposed projects to support the priority policy goals are broad enough to include or not just focus on Monroe's historic business district, but to look at all of the business districts in Monroe as being vital to our overall economy. We do have gateway and wayfinding sign installation. We're just wrapping up the final signs that did not get installed by our contractor. In talking to the Economic Development Advisory Board, they're going to be discussing kind of their recommendations to council around this particular topic. But some of the things that we've heard from them early on are an interest in having two additional gateways, one at the east and west entrance to the city along US 2. So that's the reason that you see the gateway and wayfinding sign installation on the list is to kind of finalize those two gateways. Downtown perimeter alley lighting, parking and sidewalk improvements. This is something that the council took a look at earlier in the year was downtown parking. And also discussions around kind of downtown pedestrian safety. I mean, pedestrian safety in general is going to come up on a later slide, but specific to the downtown. And one of the things I think that came out of the downtown parking study was a recognition that people are unwilling to walk a block in order to get from where parking is to where businesses are. But in looking at that realistically, I think one of the challenges for people are is that if you're arriving at night, particularly during the winter months, it is very dark. And it's just not a comfortable walk. I've done it myself with my husband and it just feels a little intimidating. And so one of the things that the Economic Development Advisory Board discussed is whether or not we should be focusing less now on Main Street because it has been really planned out. We've got gateways, we've got lighting, we have, you know, kind of the full suite of things that you would hope along the Main Street. But maybe we should start to focus in on the surrounding streets. So adding lighting, you know, improving the sidewalk, improving kind of just the way it feels if you have to park a block away and you have to walk at night, what does that feel like? Particularly activating the alleyways, which is something that a number of cities are starting to do in order to bring more activity downtown and, you know, make it feel safe when you're walking by those locations. So that's the purpose of this particular item on the list. We talked earlier about the Choose Monroe magazines. And that's really a business focus as opposed to a tourism focus, the regional tourism magazine, and then the downtown master plan. One thought that Zach and I shared, Councilmember Gamble, when you were discussing just the item around promote downtown to attract residents and visitors is to expand that to say, or change that to say, promote business districts to attract residents and visitors. And that would get to everything, not just downtown. And then that would allow us then to add more items on this, on this list focused around North Kelsey.
Yeah, because I think.
Councilmember, I've got another council member waiting.
Sorry.
It's okay, we'll, I'll put you down in the queue.
Well, I'm going to forget, so don't worry.
Because it's based off that.
The only other thing was, staff was just reminding me to mention for Councilmember Beaumont that we do include in that regional tourism magazine, the social media marketing, funding and implementation. And that actually is coming back to the Economic Development Advisory Board in the month of May to talk more strategically about what does that, what does that look like as we try and maybe reduce down to one magazine and then kind of lean in on the social media piece? So I'll, I'll share that then. So those are, those are the items. There are some other items specifically to North Kelsey and to our industrial area that come up around pedestrian safety, which has really been the focus of both of the members of our Economic Development Advisory Board who have or work for businesses that are in that North Kelsey region is they're really saying what we really need is to make sure that pedestrians can cross safely from the Galaxy Theater side, kind of that north side of North Kelsey, over to the south side so people can begin to circulate. And I think that's going to be important, obviously, in the long run as we look to add in more housing in that area. So more of those rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which we got some funding for and will be installing, but just looking at that kind of, again, kind of from a bigger picture perspective. But good, good comments and we appreciate the feedback.
All right. Councilmember Scarborough and then Councilmember Gamble and then Councilmember Walker.
The word you used, was it activate alleyway?
Yes, activate the alleyways.
What does that mean?
That means light them and bring, bring attention to them. There are a lot of cities now that are actually assisting the businesses that are on their Main Street to put in businesses, you know, to put tables, chairs, you know, try and get more people to be in those alleyways. So it's not an attractive nuisance, you know, kind of tuck back the trash cans and kind of do more. So people start to use that as a walking space and as a space for activity.
Correct the pavement, et cetera.
Yes, exactly. The challenge we have there, as I understand it from talking to Jacob Roberts, is that the city right of way is relatively narrow. And really, it's the business owners that own the most of the property back, back behind their own buildings. But it's helping them to light those buildings too, in the back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Gamble?
Oh, I like the suggestion and, you know, because one of the things, I look at some of the strategic initiatives, like the farmer's market, like we used to have it downtown, but where at least at the outskirts, Travelers Park, and we moved it to the North Kelsey. And it probably is better served there, it's a better location. But I just think that just a simple twist of verbiage like you suggested, the more that we can bring it together, the better off we will be. I still think we need focus in the downtown, it's paid off pretty significantly. But just when we're talking about the high-end strategic priorities, it should be an all-in. And then when you break down, then you can have specific, specific things called out for the different districts. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
I also love the business districts idea, but one thing that I wanted. But one thing that I wanted to say was, or add to this, or add to, I guess, the conversation is Monroe's businesses being recognized more often, or in some way. Particularly in my mind, the industrial, a lot of the businesses in the industrial. When you walk around down there, there's actually some pretty cool manufacturers or resellers. So I don't know if that's through our social media or what, but maybe it's like a weekly business highlight. I think that that would be pretty cool to call different businesses out, and the products or services that they produce.
Alright, thank you. Anything else from folks? Alright, let me go back to the, so I've got two councilmembers expressing an interest in modifying the left side of the light blue there. Promote downtown to attract residents and businesses to be promote, something to the effect of promote, promote business districts to attract residents and visitors. Thoughts on that? Okay, I've got a thumbs up from Councilmember Hanford. Thumbs up, I guess, from Councilmember Gamble. Fisher? Okay, any objection to changing promote downtown to promote business districts to attract residents and visitors? Okay, we'll go ahead and make that change then. Alright, anything else on this slide? Alright, go ahead and go on to the next slide.
Alright, so this is around the strategic priority to build community and regional connections. And so you can see the goals there again on the left. And some of the key projects that we have are implementing the new city brand and logo. That happens in '25 and '26. Completing our utility rate studies and then updating in '26 and '27 the design standards. So that comes out of the finishing up the comprehensive plan. Then establishing the multi-family tax exemption credit program, and then implementing the housing action plan. This is where you do see the amending the Lowe's CCNRs is listed under Build Community. And then the finalizing the northeast annexation, and then the US 2 and 522 improvement. So those are all listed under Building Community.
Any questions or requested revisions on this slide? Councilmember Gamble? Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough.
Appreciate that. I thought at one time we had in here somewhere, if not on the policy statement in our projects, if I'm missing it, please draw my eyes, I don't think I am, around mass transit. Are us leaning in with, because we still, and I mean, we invested in a bus to go from here to, you know, to Duval, but that was part of our priority, our strategic plan, is how do we get more, you know, as part of our connection? Those opportunities, whether buses are those opportunities, I don't see it anywhere.
Yes, and it was previously on the list, you're absolutely correct. And I think at that time, we had heard from community transit that it was their intent, if you recall, that when the Linwood Light Rail station opened, that we were going to get a commuter bus that went from Monroe to Linwood Light Rail, you know, on a regular basis. And that was, you know, kind of going to be the implementing spine of that network. And then subsequently, community transit has changed its plan. And they are now no longer planning to do any investment, at least that's in their current long-range plan. So their five-year strategic plan doesn't show any investment in bus service. And, you know, we've really leaned in, and we were able to do that in part because Kate Turtleow, our senior planner, came from community transit. And so we were really hopeful that because she came from there, she would have some insights. And I know that she's worked really hard to make those connections. So it's the reason why we dropped it, we can certainly add it back in. We do have on here, you know, support US 2 improvements and 522, and those are kind of long-range items.
That's why I'm, having those on there and not having mass transit to me makes no sense.
Does any, I see that as a positive to add it in there. Any concern about adding in supporting transit on 522 to 405?
I mean, before, we had a much broader definition, it was more just regional partners for mass transit. And that's how we ended up with the relationship that we did with, I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So I guess one of my concerns about being too broad is that that this county has a tendency to think about Highway 2, going the opposite direction that a lot of people are trying to go to go to work on the east side. So if it is overly broad, it doesn't give us direction, is what my concern is. So it could be, it could be something like support mass transit with a special focus on down 522 to 405, and also down 203. That might be something, because those are the areas we're missing right now, to me. We've got plenty of transit on a 30-minute basis from Monroe to Everett.
For me, it's supporting mass transit or mass transit options that connect to regional, connect to regional transit centers, right? So you've got, you know, now you've got one in Everett, which, right, and then you've also got even the new one, the Light Rail that just launched in the Redmond area, right? I mean, really, that's what we're needing, is we need mass transit to the transit, the larger transit centers.
Okay. Thoughts from other councilmembers? Councilmember Fulter?
The discussion that we just had about, or the information that we had that community transit is no longer going to concentrate on, what they are doing is they're actually replacing the 424 with a 908, which is a more frequent commuter, which will, and they do plan on having that be part of, they even specifically mentioned it at the workshop two weeks ago.
Is that dumb?
So that actually goes down 522, and it hits all of the major stops once it gets to the Orange Station, and then it just kind of keeps hitting the stations all the way down. So I don't think we should forget that, because that is part of CT's long-range plan. Is, I mean, as of the 18th of April, when we had a board workshop, so.
I'll follow up with you to learn more about that.
So in terms of the language here, what do folks want? Do you just want to have, advocate for transit to regional transit centers? Do you want to be more specific than that? What's, it really doesn't matter to me, I'm just concerned about things getting lost, that's all.
This is for us, though. I'm finding, regional transit centers, the way you just said that sounded pretty damn good.
Councilmember Beaumont, and then Councilmember Hanford?
I agree with Councilmember Gamble that, you know, 522 and Highway 2 are priorities for us, obviously. But I think if this is goals, this is what we're reaching for, it makes sense to have it in there.
Councilmember Hanford?
I concur.
We'll have, we'll add in something there to support mass transit options to transit centers, regional transit centers. Cool. Councilmember Walker?
I would just add, or I guess add a specific bullet about growing the city's list or investments in events like the block parties or movies in the park, concerts in the park. Those are seemingly absolutely loved by the community. And I know that the chamber has taken a big part of the, taken on a big part of the logistics of them. And I think that if the city was able to get more, to find ways to contribute more or facilitate them more, I think that the community would love that. Because it is a short span in the summer, I don't know if that can be, I don't know, just the events, if the city could take part in facilitating them, or, yeah, you get my point.
Okay, do you want that under Building Community Connections, or on the previous slide?
I don't know, I went back and forth between the slides a few times.
Okay, with staff taking a look at that and determining which slide it goes on?
Yeah, we're thinking it goes under Strengthen Connections, because there's the priority policy goal that says support events and gathering spaces. So that seems to be the most logical place to drop that in.
Gotcha. Does anybody object to having that added? And do you want that in '25, '26?
Can you just repeat what the proposal is?
Yes, so to my understanding right now, it is the chamber that organizes and puts on movies in the park and concerts. Music in Park? Music in Park, sorry. They do those. Okay, got it. Yeah, I guess if we could just put in there, or even a priority in 2025 for the city to take a more active role in growing, I guess, that roster of events, I think would be cool. I'd love to hear other councilmembers' feedback.
Yes, did, any councilmembers have any thoughts on this or objection to it? Councilmember Fulter, your thinking?
The reason I'm thinking is because I chair the LTAC board, and so we actually forward, we distribute, I don't know, I don't want to mess up the words, the funding that goes to those kinds of things through the chamber. So we did actually ask them for more music, but, you know, that's really, that's their gig. So we asked for it, we're not sure if we're going to get it. I think that we need to encourage them, but you need to encourage them personally, I'm not sure it's city goal.
And see, I've never known, and maybe staff can answer this, if it's not a city thing because the city just hasn't played that role before, or chosen to play that role, or if it's a chamber thing only because that is their domain, then it's kind of outside of our reach. Because like you're saying, how we encourage them to do more music, I want more music.
Absolutely.
People want more music. So if we say we want more music, and they say we don't, we don't got the resources or people for that, and not to put a bunch of weight on parks, and that's why I'm thinking putting a bullet in there would be, at least in theory, cool, because it'd be a priority, put more funds towards it.
So remind me, what is the bullet you'd like to have added?
Help me out here, Councilmember Fulter, or anyone. Are you looking for the city to take more active role in community building events, I guess? Yeah.
Does, are there any concerns about having a policy goal that the city take more, be more involved in community events?
Mayor, I'd love your feedback on the topic.
We do a lot of, we do a lot of partnerships right now with other agencies, you know, with other groups. And that's sort of the way that our model has been here. We will, when we had ARP dollars, America Rescue Land Dollars, we had grants available for community building. To Councilmember Fulter's point, we have funds available for, through LTAC. We can always put together general fund dollars for grants and things like that. But, you know, so it's not, it's not like we can't do it. When it goes on here, it's going to become a little bit more compelling for us to try to fund it. And so the question that I would have today for your consideration is whether or not what we're doing today is fine, it works. And if the answer is yes, then we could either add it here just to document that we do it, or just keep doing what we're doing, we don't necessarily need to add it. So I'm not giving you a straight answer one way or another, it's just, that's kind of how the system has worked here. I know that a lot of the programming in our parks is done by outside entities. And we provide the facilities, and then we try to find, like, what is it, Skyhawk Camp? Skyhawk, so there's a sports team, you know, Boys and Girls Club. We try to provide the facilities and then have somebody else do the programming. And that's sort of the public-private partnership model that we've been using in this community, and a lot of communities here.
Awesome.
Yeah, so we can, we can either document that we do this, or we can say that we want to do more of it. But again, then you're getting into sort of competing priorities, right? Did you have anything at this point that you wanted to add? Or, and then I'm going to go to councilmembers after talking to Mike.
I would love to hear Director Farrell, and I'm sorry for taking so much time with this.
It's okay, but, so to clarify, Jake, you still got before, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. I think to answer your question, as far as, or actually, or further request is, yeah, more events. So, and we do it in a hybrid-y sense of, you know, our model in the Rose Plan. So it's to partner with community organizations. We always have the door open to try new things. But then also, as we have bandwidth, then the city, you know, can actually run some events. But like, so Skyhawk's example, for example, if we were going to get into running sports camps, then we would need to create a recreation division of staff, you know, to operate those. So, yeah, so the model has been that, that, you know, we provide the spaces and whatnot. We support events, so we're involved to some degrees. So the movies, the music concerts, it's not solely the chamber, it's the city of Monroe Parks is heavily involved in that event as well, as far as all the operations. We're providing the stage, the sound, you know, and actually with like contract concessions, things like that. So anyways, yeah, to answer your question, yes, we look for more events. We have a chuck full, I mean, every weekend in the nice weather months, there are things going on. And that's what we run into too, is, well, we have this event, and we can't have other event because there's no parking, and this is going on. So we're already kind of reaching a point where, you know, the city parks are kind of, you know, full with events. So, but we always are hoping to, you know, vetting out new events as well.
I'll add this also, that one of the requests that you're going to see in the upcoming slides is the need for a couple more FTEs just to maintain our existing parks. And so to what Mike just said, which is basically adding a whole new subdivision in parks to be parks and recreation, means needing to hire staff that do more than just schedule the spaces, right? You've now got to have staff that will do more hands-on with holding events and things like that.
Yeah.
So.
No, I completely understand, and I'll withdraw the kind of idea for now until, I don't...
Okay.
I guess for me, there's more stuff to work out in my mind, or get more feedback from staff about the actual financials behind it, because obviously that's the most important part.
Councilmember, I saw Fisher, Beaumont, and Fulter. So, okay, so Fisher, Beaumont, Hanford, Fulter. Okay, everybody get that? Fisher, you're up.
I don't have a lot to say since you're just kind of pulling that back. So I kind of like how things are ran now. No, I love it, please. And just being open to more events, bigger events, a different event, whatever we can handle. I know that you guys are doing a lot, and my family and I enjoy a lot of those things, and there's always parks people there. So I kind of like it, how it's functioning right now. But just keep your eyes peeled, of course, for new and innovative ways to entertain folks. So I appreciate all your work, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor, I think Councilmember Beaumont wants it for me.
Councilmember Beaumont?
Councilmember Hanford?
Your flags, your flags both went like this, like flanking, that's all I remember. I thought we were launching a Tomcat off the aircraft carrier, you know.
So this is probably the number one thing that people talk to me about, is our summer events and how much they like them. And it's run the gamut from, can we get rid of movies in the park and just do music for two months? Or can we, and I know the cost is prohibitive for hiring these bands. I know they're several thousand dollars each, and we only have so much money, and I get it. But wow, I mean, just last night, in fact, I went for a walk around Lake Tye with a friend, and she was asking me about this, and how can we get more music in the park? And one of her ideas was, how about if we have an open mic night? Where we just have, we set up the shelf, and I let her know that, you know, our staff needs to be there. It costs us money to set up events, it's not free. But her idea was, gosh, we could just open it up, but wouldn't it be cool? We have all these talented people in Monroe, and maybe instead of paying for a band, we invite talented people, and maybe some people will be more talented than others. But she loved this idea, and I thought it was kind of cool too, to sort of open it up. And, you know, I know Crooked Label does an open mic night, we have different businesses in the community that do this type of thing. But I think the idea of people coming together in the summer and being together with their families and friends, I know I've invited tons of my friends from out of town to come enjoy this fun event that we have in July each week. And I think that there's a way that maybe we open up our, you know, just think outside the box here, and maybe not be spending $3,000 for a band, but maybe we can do something else, it's sort of a community event and celebrate music in a different way. We still have to pay, I know city staff would still be involved, Parks staff would be involved. We still have to pay. I know city staff would still be involved, parks staff would be involved. But this is a really hot topic in Monroe. People talk a lot about it. And honestly, it's probably the number one thing people ask me about. So just weighing in and I appreciate the discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. I, actually, I was going to say very similar things to Councilmember Beaumont, where I think it's, I think it's not either or, but it's both. It's like, like you're saying, Councilmember Walker, but also it's, let's just be open to, you know, other things. If we have Movies in the Park on Saturday nights in August and we have music in the park Friday nights in July, Friday nights in August are open. They don't conflict with the movies necessarily. So just things like that, like just continue to, let's just continue thinking outside the box and be open to different ways because that is really a highlight. Like the Movies, the music, everything, it's, it's really good. Not just for bringing outside people into our city, but it's good for our community. Because I enjoy going to those things and seeing my neighbor who might be around the corner, so I don't see them that often. But it's another chance to connect with them, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulter?
Yeah, these guys kind of have the same idea that I was thinking, you know, Movies, boo, music, yes. And, and there's certainly a way to do that, which is with our local talent. I do however, think that we're at the wrong level with this conversation. So, I mean, I think we're supposed to be flying up here and we're like, hey, weeds, let's go. So anyway, you have my full support on it, but I think that we should talk about this under a different time.
Yeah, well, so one of the things, and I saw that Councilmember Gamble has his hand up. Also, one of the things that we could do is we could always add in for 2025 a line that just like explore opportunities to expand music in our parks. And then like that, at least in 2025, it's identified as a priority to have a conversation about it. So we don't need to solve the issue tonight. And during the budget process, you know, I can scratch my head and think, okay, is there $20,000 in extra money that we can put towards something? But that might be a way to do it is 2025, just explore that. And then consider it for 2026 as an amendment or something to the biennial budget or something. So, does anybody object to maybe something that broad? Okay, Councilmember Walker, you were next, but Councilmember Gamble hasn't spoken on the topic yet. So I'm going to go ahead and take Councilmember Gamble, Walker, Walker and Gamble now. All right. All right, Councilmember Gamble, you're next, and then Councilmember Walker. Unless Councilmember Scarborough puts his hand up.
I was just going to say, I, there's a little bit of hating going on with the Movies in the Park and they're, we get great turnouts for those. They are a lot, they are cost-effective. There is like a lot of benefit, a lot of connection there. So I definitely would not want to see those. And we're in the weeds, but, and there's kids in my neighborhood that absolutely love that. They love, you know. So anyway, I just wanted to throw some love to the Music in the Park. And everybody knows I love live music. That's like what I do, so.
All right, Councilmember Walker and then Councilmember, Councilmember Walker and then Councilmember Fisher.
Gosh, there's so much stuff to respond to. Mike, I just want, I agree, you are amazing. The Parks guys are amazing. I've seen the Parks guys out there at 11 o'clock after Movies in the Park cleaning up. So thank you to your department. Because I, I hope I didn't give off the impression that you guys didn't do enough. And that was, that was tough to kind of word around. But the difficulty with flying at this high of a level is when adding a bullet and you start saying, what do you mean by the words? And I go, oh, here's an example of what I mean. And then you get granular because you start talking about an event and then you go through the logistics of the event. So I'm sorry because I'm also having difficulty figuring that out. But I loved Councilmember Beaumont's ideas about opening it up to local talent, just getting more creative. Because cost efficiency is a huge part of it. But the main thing I wanted to say, and then I'll turn off my mic till next slide, is what's the most active camera? It's right behind Chief Benson Boone. The Monroe City Council is directly asking you to do a concert. Mike, can we do it this summer? In Sky River Park? No, at some point in Monroe in the near future. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Fisher?
I was going to say the same thing, but no, and to Parks, if you guys can just work late Friday and then Saturday, and then maybe do cleanup on Sunday in the nicest weather that our state gets for three months straight, that would be great. So that's a little bit of what I was hearing and I am sympathetic to probably what's going on in your head. It's like, you've got to be kidding me. I'm going to, I am going to be working every single day this summer. So I want to make sure that you know that I am sensitive to that as well. And then with Councilmember Gamble, Gambler. The Movie in the Park, yes, I could bad rap a little bit tonight. I feel like the Movies in the Park is really great for our younger families that have kids. And I know that there's a ton of kids and families at the Music in the Park too. But it seems to be a little bit more geared towards adult things. And so I would like, I like to give some props to also the Movie in the Parks, so. That's all I got. And then again, if you guys could just work seven days a week, that'd be great. Thanks.
So, so I know you all know this, but I'll just go ahead and say it. When we talk about our staff working late, we talk about the staff, you know, working seven days a week. And I know that we're joking and everything, but they, all this comes to you. It comes to whether or not the positions are funded, whether or not we add additional FTEs. All of this is not staff, you know, salaried staff just working extra hours and being away from family. It comes down to the policy and the budgetary choices that the council makes. And so this has been a really important conversation. And I think it's good right now for us to not be constrained so much by budget, which we will be in the upcoming meetings. That's why retreats are important, is to get ideas down and then you can come back and balance that with the reality of finances. But I do want to be clear, you know, we thank the staff for the work they're doing. At the same time, when they're properly funded, you may not have as many people working overtime and taking time away from their families and certainly salaried staff. I remember one of the first Movies in the Park that I went to as mayor. Mike, our director, was out there pumping up the screen because it was an air screen or something like that and trying to suspend it and all this other stuff, you know. It, but, but where I'm going with that is you have some staff members also that work very full weeks that are salaried, that are there not making additional funds, you know, with overtime and things like that, that are, that are making these things possible. So even if it is open mic night, you still have a stage you need to set up. You still have, you know, advertising and all these other things. So it's not like it's low cost. You still have all that work. But we'll go ahead and we'll put in the explorer thing for 2025 and we'll have more conversation around it. I really value this conversation. Thank you. Anything else on this slide? All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next slide. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So the next priority policy goal is be friendly and responsive. Oh, no, strengthen connections. That's all right. And the goals listed for this priority include refine and sustain friendly and responsive customer service, strengthen communications and engagement between city department and residents, support and develop community-centered government facilities, reinforce workplace recruitment retention initiatives that reflect the community and modernize city operations and services through technology innovation. So the items that we have here, the projects listed under be friendly and responsive include completing the municipal campus Phase Three project. We're looking at an enterprise resource program, so that is under the IT efficiency category. Develop and implement methods to track strategic plan progress. So always wanting to do better with reporting back to you and community members how we're doing with implementing our strategic plan. Continuing to expand our NeoGov platform. This is the platform that we use to recruit for vacant positions. IT server replacements, we do need to get these scheduled and done. And if you've ever been in IT, then you know that these server replacements are a capital investment. A little less expensive now that we've moved to the cloud, but not by much. An IT strategic plan. We did a strategic plan five years ago and it's really served us well. And so we're looking to update that strategic plan to ensure that we're moving in the right direction with technology. One of the things that struck me a couple of weeks ago when I was thinking about the strategic plan in general was that a lot of what we used to do was invest in kind of hard infrastructure, roads, water, sewer. But really, in the future, our infrastructure is really going to be all IT-based. You just think about the way that the world is moving. And if we don't at least keep pace with that, then the customers and the people that we're trying to attract to our community are going to be less interested in coming here if we're not keeping pace. So that's what we're looking at, are those investments. Review and update our scan and toss records policy. So that has to do with, again, how we're responding to public records requests and how we're managing kind of our internal documents. Building permit software implementation. We're actually implementing on a strategic priority that the council previously had with updating our permit software to increase efficiencies and do a better job on the backend system of communicating with our financial software package. And then develop employee wellness programs. That's under attract and retain. It's very important now to people that are just entering the workforce to ensure that not only are we engaging them as an employee, but they're also ensuring that their mental, physical health, that their financial health, that all of that is also being considered as part of being a team member here in Monroe. And then we have a list of the upcoming negotiations. So just again, wanting to make sure that as we're planning ahead with the type of staff resources that we have available, those negotiations take considerable amount of time, both for the departments that are involved, for a finance department, and then for our human resources as well. So when we have big negotiations to take place, it does kind of limit the other projects that we can take on in any given year.
All right, Councilmember Hanford, you had your flag up first.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a lot of great things there. The thing that stands out to me that I really love seeing is the develop employee wellness program. If there's, I know we don't have space in our new city hall for a gym, but if there's a way to, that we can reimburse, you know, or give funds towards a monthly amount towards gym memberships for employees, I think that would be a great idea.
Thank you. Anything else on the, especially the 25 and 26 on this slide? Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I don't know why.
Every person in the room, I can, I can feel the tension when I turn on this mic, so. I just see it, this is the time. This isn't, all right, all right. Especially Becky. Becky's over there thinking about how many balloons she needs to pop later. This is dreaming time. Administrator night, thank you for talking about IT. My biggest nightmare is cybersecurity risk to Monroe. Again, not, not biggest because I've been made fun of for those kinds of starting phrases like that before. But cybersecurity is going to be so huge. You see what attacks can do to cities. There's a headline about it every day. So as the mayor was saying, it's our responsibility to fund ideas. And I would say that that's worthy of an investment. So if, yeah, if that could be a big, big consideration, IT strategic plan. And then I think it goes under this slide, but communication and accessibility, especially from us as electeds. Right now, I guess this, maybe it's because of being newly elected, I feel like I'm not doing a good enough job communicating with people. And I have that perception just because of both the lack of quantity of time or ability to go out and talk to more people. But also because of the routes that I have to talk with people. Besides city council and public comment and running into people in the community, I don't feel like I've got the ability to explain some of the things that people are most irritated about or have concerns about. You see them on community Facebook pages. Obviously, because of public records requests, public records request laws and those details, you don't want to engage with that. So working on the idea of like doing council member Facebook pages or something like that, adding events for accessibility, like coffee with council members or something. And then going over to the policy side of things. There's a lot of basic questions that people have of the city and the council that can be explained pretty, maybe not simply, but they have answers. So for instance, all the time I will get asked by a person, how does the city work? Why did we allow another subway to come in here?
You'll keep getting those questions.
Oh, oh, for sure. But I'm just saying, a person, I don't know that it's that easy for a person to figure that out besides running into a person, a staffer. But you're completely right. Yeah, especially subways.
So a couple of thoughts. One, you do have email, you do have the ability to have a Facebook account. And so I would encourage you, if you haven't done that yet, each one of you, if you'd like to have a social media account, you can get a Facebook account. You can already do coffee with a council member. Just don't expect staff to come with you. When I, when I have done like coffee with the mayor in the past and things like that, I'd have minimal support from staff. That would be primarily me. So if you get a Facebook account or something like that, you can certainly advertise you're going to do coffee with you as a council member. Just make certain that it's not while you're campaigning because there are some rules around that too. And, yeah, so you have those avenues and we can certainly talk a little bit more about that. It's just a matter of staff support, right? So I guess where I'm going with, if this is about being friendly and responsive, you have the ability to do some of those things. We also have probably in the list a communications plan, a communications person still.
We're going to continue the contract with Mojo. That's the recommendation. But I did write down Mojo though, as an option to consider some additional alternatives for getting communications out to members of the public, so.
Yeah, so that, so that would be in there also, so that there's a, you know, just like, I think Councilmember Beaumont brought up the idea about needing to do some more stuff about recycling. And so we listened to you here and then we're like, okay, yeah, let's go ahead and do some posts about recycling. Right? So that's something that we're able to do as well.
So cool. Awesome. And last, last thing, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I don't know if it's a FAQ page on the website or some way to summarize some of the most commonly asked questions that people have of the city. For instance, how the city is dealing with homelessness. There's so, so much concern about it and questions about it towards the city. If we could somehow, I don't know, work on messaging towards the community on some of these high-level things or some of the most commonly held concerns, I think that that would be a huge service to the community and it would help a lot of us as well as staff that manage social media pages that have to come up with the right answer.
Yeah, and in some of those cases, we do have those pages already set up. Like we do have an area about unhoused residents online. But to your point, there may be topics that the council would like to make certain are on our website. And, you know, maybe that's a conversation basis that we could add to 2025. It's just, you know, discussing communications planning or just maybe a future topic or just something that council members, if you see that there's something missing or you can't find something, we can see if it's online. If the answer is no, then that's where we have a conversation about adding it online or updating it. So, Councilmember Fisher, you're good. All right, anything else on friendly and responsive? Okay, I will say this, that we spent a lot of time talking about the Music in the Park, right? I really appreciate, Councilmember Walker, you just highlighting the IT. As I have said to people, we don't think to invest in our sewer system until it breaks and it's running into your basement. And then you wonder why nobody invested in it. It's the same thing with our IT. You know, there are things that are back, that are in the back part of what supports everything. So you're talking about finance, you're talking about IT, you're talking about personnel, you're talking about risk, you're talking about all of these things that, that. talking about risk, you're talking about all of these things that you don't see them out in the field, because they're in the back office and they're maintaining everything else. They're making certain that people get paid and negotiating contracts, and all of that stuff is equally as important to make certain we're investing in those things. So, thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next slide. Oh, thank you. Strengthening connections. All right.
All right, so the priority policy goals here include supporting events and gathering spaces for community engagement, strengthen partnerships with service organizations and agencies, ensure people have access to city services and resources, and last, maintain and build infrastructure that meets residents and businesses' needs, conforms with requirements, and is aligned with community expectations. So the projects that are listed here are implementing a legislative strategy, and then in 2026, develop and fund that strategy. So we've had kind of a scattershot approach as far as where we are attending and leaning in on lobbying for our priority projects. And so we wanted to have a conversation with council around kind of how do we do that more strategically to ensure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. Funding and conducting a citywide crosswalk evaluation study in '25, and then in '26, updating that capital facilities plan to reflect the results of that crosswalk evaluation. We had a number of community members that came in and spoke with council about concerns around crosswalks. We did get a grant for the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, but I think what we've observed generally as a community is more people are walking and biking in our community than ever before, and that our infrastructure just really hasn't kept up with kind of the change in community activity. And so we really need to, I think, lean in on this for the next couple of years and start to address community concerns. Funding strategy for railroad crossing overpass and grade separation and mobility improvements. We're currently requesting funding from the federal government for grade-separated rail crossings, but this comes back to, I think, a long-term strategic goal that's been in our comprehensive plan for some sort of pedestrian overpass as well. So we need to figure out how to kind of move that into our strategic plan and start to seek funding, because again, that's going to be a project that's going to be multiple years and trying to find the funding sources and a design and finally getting that together. The location, too, like where, which intersection do we put it at? So that would be something else to continue to discuss. We just had a conversation, I think, at the last council meeting about Chain Lake Road and capacity improvements along Chain Lake, so that is also on the list. The noise reduction, so just the train horn noise coming through Monroe, that's been a project that we've been working on for a while, so Quiet Train Initiative, that still is on the list. Tierney Place Phase Three Design, that's the extension onto Oak Street and connecting in with Old Owen Road, that's still there. I'm sorry, that next line is actually just a duplication of Chain Lake. I meant to take that out and somehow didn't get there or didn't save the right version. And then finally, another item that's been coming up frequently in council conversations is evaluating and prioritizing bike and pedestrian safety projects. So separate from just crosswalks, where else do we really need to talk about sidewalk improvements, separated bike trails, and some other things? So starting to look at those items. Some of these things will be coming out of the transportation element of the comprehensive plan that will provide us, I think, some guidance, perhaps some direction, but something for council members to keep in mind when that transportation element comes back to you to ensure, because it's those projects, they move from that transportation element then into the capital facilities plan. So we can plan for them here in the strategic plan, but really, in order to make them happen, they have to be on that transportation element, because that's how we end up then folding those into the 20-year capital facilities plan. If you think to add, I'm looking at the subject matter expert on capital facilities planning. I should look at Becky, too.
Then you should look at Jacob.
I could if he were there.
Any questions? Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
I think this is an excellent list. I'm really pleased to see a lot of projects in here that are directly responsive to what I hear in the community and what we've heard as council, and I'm just really, really happy to see a lot of these things addressed, and I think the public is going to be very happy, too. I would like just a bit more explanation on Tierney Place Phase Three Design, if possible. Could you just basically outline?
That's the extension of Tierney Place from Woods Creek to Old Owen Road? It's the ribbed tunnel for Oak Street.
Oh, got you. Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions on strengthening connections? So there's, there are two other items that I just wanted to make certain that we talked with council about, either under strengthening connections or probably the regional connections to add in, just like advocating for 522 and US2, adding in advocating for trail connection from Monroe to Snohomish and a trail connection from Monroe to Duval. By doing that, you'll create a link that allows you to go from eastern Washington.
It's there under Parks.
Oh, it's under Parks?
Yeah.
It's coming up. So I just wanted to give you, oh, we already did it. Okay. I just, I was focused, we were focused on music, weren't we?
We were.
We were focused on music. Okay. Well, thank you very much for supporting that, council. I just wanted to take this moment to thank you.
A mention, an honorable mention. I was like, whoa.
Okay. All right. Anything else on strengthening connections? All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next one. Thank you. Whoops.
Nope, went too far.
Ensure a safe place for all. Deborah?
Excellent. So the priority policy goals here are ensure that Monroe is a safe place for everyone, foster community engagement and participation in decision-making processes, enhance access to human services for Monroe residents, develop a community where everyone feels at home and everyone feels they belong. So the priority projects then in '25 and '26 are, this should be fund and install public safety cameras, not surveillance cameras, if we're not sure how that word slipped in, but public safety cameras. Yes, not intended. Apologies.
Yeah, so that is, just for the record, that is a typo.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Not intended. Update human service needs assessment, municipal court judge contract negotiations. That's just a placeholder to remember that that contract comes up, followed by then in 2026, an updated municipal court assessment. This is where the specific training for Emmitsburg was mentioned earlier by Councilmember Beaumont. Provide stipends to all board and commission volunteers, a levy lid lift ballot measure, identify police department operational needs and financing strategy, and then finalize preliminary police facility design.
All right, questions? I know that you've already brought up some. I'm going to go ahead, Councilmember Hanford had his hand up. Go ahead. Or you had your flag up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do believe that we did want some surveillance cameras at the parks and things like that. That was part of our police strategy.
We do have cameras. I guess, I guess what I think of surveillance is that there's somebody watching it 24/7, so I guess, I guess I need to go back and double-check my definition of surveillance.
Well, I just want to make sure, yeah, because we.
We do have cameras, yes.
Right.
And if an incident occurs, we will go check the cameras.
Sky River. Yeah, yeah.
Thanks. Yeah. To me, surveillance is active. It's not what we're doing there. Councilmember Beaumont?
Now, it's the right time to ask. So on the stipends, I just wanted to clarify, is this adding stipend, safer park board, or is this just keeping with the stipends for?
This would be to add stipends to the other boards and commissions that don't receive stipends. So the planning commission gets a stipend.
Right.
I'd like to have a conversation with the council about adding stipends for the other people who are serving on our boards and commissions.
Which would be parks board, civil service, or salary commission?
All of the above.
Okay.
Yeah, so if planning commissioners are getting $100 a meeting or $75 a meeting, I forgot where that is right now, they do meet more frequently than the other boards and commissions. The thought would be that we have similar stipend for the other boards and commission numbers, and yeah.
Is this typical, just out of curiosity, with other city municipalities?
Some do and some don't.
Okay.
Yeah, it just depends. Some people see it as a volunteer position, and there are some people that would not apply because of costs that are incurred as a result of, you know, having to find kid care and things like that. The narrative on why we started paying our planning commissioners was a former planning commissioner back in the 90s wasn't able to fully participate, and by having a stipend allowed her to be able to participate because she was able to pay for care for her kids during planning commission meetings. She later became a council member, and then she became a mayor. And so just, that was Mayor Walzer, and that's the story that I was told, which is why planning commission had a stipend. Where I came from, boards and commissioners never had stipends. It was new to me when I came here to Monroe. But yeah, some do, some don't, and it's something for us to come back and discuss in more detail another time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Other questions, comments on this item? All right. Thank you.
That's it.
All right.
Ended where we started.
Councilmembers, any other questions or comments? Is there anything that you felt was missing? Again, we've provided a framework here to connect it to Imagine Monroe, so it's not just a document getting dusty on a shelf. As we do that, though, sometimes we miss things. Maybe there's something that should be up there and the bucket just wasn't there to put it in there. Councilmember Scarborough?
I think everything, we talk about all of these things, and they're great ideas. It all comes down to money.
Yes.
Everything is going to be, you want to pay for this, this, and this, or this, or this, and that'll be the bigger discussion, I think, we have.
Absolutely agree. Absolutely agree. It's not a matter of whether or not you have enough money sometimes, it's a matter of how you prioritize things. All right, any other questions, comments? Staff? Any other questions, comments? All right, SLT members, I really appreciate all the work that you've done to put this together and bring it forward. Thank you. Thank you. And councilmembers, thank you very much for the conversation on this. I really appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to have to say all that all over again. I'm just kidding. Councilmember Hanford?
Nothing to do with any of this. Thank you very much. It was great.
Okay.
Since you said we were moving on. I spoke with Director Pylant? No, it's Manager Pylant?
I just got booted.
Right? Assistant Director Pylant. Thank you.
Soon to be ex.
Yes. I spoke with him this week and informed him that I would.
Mr. Christian is still on.
He's responsible.
We all can make those very mean.
Yeah. So I spoke with him this week and let him know that I was, unfortunately, I had it on my calendar, but some things came up, and so I will be traveling, so I'm unable to attend his goodbye appear. Otherwise, I was planning on, so.
Yeah, and Tyler is still online. I just checked. He came back in. Everybody say, hi, Tyler.
Boo, Tyler. Boo, Tyler.
Heather on that one, yes.
But I do just, I do want to thank Assistant Director Pylant for his service, and we really appreciate having him in our city. Thanks.
Me, too. Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
Has Zach your relative left the building? All right. Well, I just want to say that we are all very grateful for all of your contributions. Good sir. I wanted to tell your grandmother that while she was here, but also just wanted to refine my message. Benson Boone, the city of Monroe is incredibly proud of all the success that you've had, and it is so well-deserved, and just wanted to formally express my appreciation for you, and I feel like there's unanimous agreement on the city council. And your ex-coach, Councilmember Beaumont, as well as the city staff and the chief of police, would be honored if you would come and talk to Mayor Thomas about some kind of concert.
All right.
That's all I got.
That's all you got. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Saying none, and there being no objection, we are adjourned. We are adjourned. Thank you.